This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk.
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Welcome and thanks for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation, would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the public, to the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our minutes from 7:24 to 24 administrative meeting and minutes from 7:29 to 24 commission meeting was received, commissioners? Anything? Minutes will stand as submitted. Presentation. Alvarez Outstanding Service Award. Would you play the crescendo for Doug, please? Doug, you have the floor. Madam Clerk.
Mayor Commissioners, thanks for having us here today. We're here to tell a really good story. City of Helena is the capital of the state of Montana. We had a city of Missoula had a disaster and a wind event on Wednesday, July 24th, with winds of up to 100 miles an hour. And what we do as a capital city is say first and foremost is what can we do to help? Where can we be and when? And through working through Chris Daly, our arborist and our urban forestry supervisor back in the back here, Chris Daly worked closely with Ben Carson, the urban forestry program manager for the city of Missoula, to coordinate in the trenches the day after the disaster. So on Thursday, July 25th, we coordinated to assess what their needs were short term and get down there. And in doing so, we asked staff who would like to go and help, receive some overtime, but help with disaster relief, and we had two volunteers. Today, before you, we have Jerry Parker and Gabe King. They volunteered to go into the disaster, and they went down on Thursday, the 26th, or excuse me, Friday, the 26th, and stayed through Tuesday, July 30th, working every day through the weekend while volunteering to go down to help the city of Missoula. And that's the kind of team that we have, and that's the kind of city that we are, and we're fortunate to have the staff we have. And today, without any further ado, we'd like to award Gabe and Jerry with their coins. Mr. Mayor.
With the Outstanding Service Award. Gary, I'm in Gabe, would you step forward, please? Both of you guys. Anyone want to say a few words?
Mr. Mayor.
Emily. Go ahead.
Just, um, I think.
Happy to help.
The director's comments, I think, kind of summarize everything that we've been hearing and thinking, so we're very grateful. I did hear from a handful of my friends who said they saw the City of Helena emblem on a vehicle wherein they were there, and so really appreciate all your work. I know that it is something that I hope every community in Montana would do the same, but thanks for being great ambassadors for the city and helping our neighbors in time of need.
Any others? Thank you. All right. Fiscal Year 24 Budget Careover. Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Tonight, we have before you a list that was in your pocket of budget carryovers from fiscal '24 to fiscal '25. Most of these carryovers are capital-related and part of our long-term capital range program. One of the challenges of just passing an annual budget every year is we also pass our capital projects within that. And many and most of these capital projects are run over a span of one to sometimes even five years. And so that is one of the reasons, primary reasons, is that we come before the commission every year to present these carryovers into the next fiscal year budget is because these are long-range capital projects that either got initiated in fiscal '24 or beginning to be initiated in fiscal '24 and haven't quite got off the ground or completed in the year, and they need to be carried over to the next fiscal year. It's a significant number, but it is all primarily generated to capital programs. It's in the amount of $43,499,000. In the list that was presented in your packet, you can see that most of that is related to the water and wastewater funds. We also have loan and ARPA grant money that will be carried over as well that we didn't quite realize in fiscal '24 that we'll expect in fiscal '25 and perhaps even fiscal '26. And then wastewater loan, or excuse me, a solid waste residential loan for garbage truck equipment that we've been approved for the intercap loan. However, we haven't received the equipment yet, so it's on a reimbursement basis. So when we actually do receive the equipment, we'll pay for it and then finalize the loan with the state of Montana. If you have any questions at this time, I'm happy to answer.
Comments or questions from the commission, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a very brief question. The $43 million seemed high, and I did not have time to go back to look. Is that a typical figure? And if not, is that attributable to the ARPA factor?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner Reed. That's a pretty big figure. It's more than normal. It is in line with about what we had last year, which was right around $42 million. I would say most of it is related to these large water and wastewater projects that are ARPA-funded.
Any other comments from the commission? Thank you, Director Danielson.
Mayor, I don't know about procedure-wise, but I think it, the budget resolution just requires that the city manager and/or staff inform the commission of the carryovers. But I think that there's a move to accept the recommendation that would be requested of the commission.
Thank you, Director Danielson. At this time, I'll accept, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor. I move to accept the city manager's recommendation for FY '24 to FY '25 budget carryover appropriations.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
All right. Board appointments. I'm recommending the following board appointment. Helena Citizens Council, appointment of Katie Ryan to the Helena Citizen Council as a representative of District Five. Any comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this? Madam Clerk? Oh, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve the appointment of Katie Ryan to the Helena Citizens Council as representative of District Five.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consent agenda. Consider granting a non-exclusive 10-feet-wide utility easement across city-owned property known at the Centennial Trail to Montana Internet Corporation to install underground fiber optic infrastructure. No presentation required. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve consent agenda item A.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Commissioners proposes. Report of the city attorney.
Mayor Commissioners, I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Report of the city manager.
Mayor Commissioners, I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Communications from Helena Citizens Council. Who's in the queue?
Hi there, this is Sydney Austin representing the Helena Citizens Council. I wanted to first thank the commission on behalf of HCC for some of the work you all have been doing. So specifically, we wanted to thank you all for your support of passenger rail service through Helena, and also wanted to thank the commission for your consideration of dust abatement and a newer speed limit on Davis Street. And then wanted to report that the Helena Citizens Council is working on a possible larger outreach event to help the planning department gather citizen opinions on the growth and planning in the city of Helena, and we'll keep the commission posted on if and when that event happens. And that's all from us.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Thanks. Regular items. Consider a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the collection and disposal of residential garbage and refuse for fiscal year 2025, and levy and assess all property receiving residential solid waste collection. Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. So this is the first of several resolutions of intention to set our assessments for the next fiscal year. At the most recent administrative meeting, I presented to the commission details in regards to what each of these assessments are. For tonight, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I believe that we had the opportunity to discuss all of them and answer your questions at the administrative meeting.
Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
On this particular rate, as I recall, the increases are primarily inflationary. Is that accurate?
Mayor and Commissioner Logan, yes. So the residential solid waste is being recommended to increase by $24 per year per each, you know, account that they have with the city. It is primarily inflationary-related. Last year, there was an increase to help pay for the loan that we're taking out for the solid waste equipment. The cost of, just operating costs have gone on, gone up substantially in addition to staffing costs. And I believe that we also discussed the subsidy for the curbside recycling that the city is fostering for the residents that participate in that program are also a reason that we're asking for the rate increase to the rate holders.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic?
Just really briefly, so we've gone over a lot of this in the, well, all of it, we have gone over all of it, in the administrative meetings, but for the public just tuning in today, we're going to be running through a number of assessments today that are, we have to approve every single year. And this is the only one besides the rates for the building department fee structure, this is the only one that's on everyone's bill that is seeing an increase. Is that accurate?
Mayor and Commissioner Dean, that's mostly accurate. I do have a calculation that I do for lighting districts each year, and so that's based on the cost of electricity. Those are set for each individual lighting district. We have 53 lighting districts within the city. They're, you know, dependent upon how many homes or properties are within the district and the cost of electricity, but I did see a relatively stable adjustment to most of those districts for the next fiscal year.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor, just one brief comment on this. I think increasing rates is not something any of us ever take lightly. I will say that I've been really impressed with how our staff has been able to respond to being really spot-on in terms of what it costs to operate city services and not asking for any more than is required. We all are obviously going to have another conversation about solid waste in the next six months when the Integrated Solid Waste Master Plan comes to the commission. So I think that will be an opportunity to talk about what do we actually want to see in this rate and how it impacts every single person in our community. But given the fact that we have not raised the rate more than $5 in the last, $5 total in the last 10 years, you know, I'm appreciative to staff for being thoughtful about that and looking forward to, you know, our future conversations about how we can improve our services in solid waste where they're requested and be mindful of how our assessments impact people.
Any other commissioners? Do we have any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the collection and disposal of residential garbage and refuse for fiscal year 2025, and levy and assess all properties receiving residential solid waste collection, and set a public hearing for August 26, 2024.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution of intentions to levy and assess properties to recover amortized loans issued under the Residential Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy Loan Program for tax year 2024. Commissioners, any comments, questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution of intention to levy and assess properties to recover the amortized loans issued on the Residential Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy Loan Program for the tax year 2024, and to set a public hearing for August 26, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any public comments on this topic? It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution of intentions to levy and assess properties to recover the cost of reimbursement for water and wastewater infrastructure installed by the city for the tax year 2024. Commissioners? Any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. I move to approve a resolution of intention to levy and assess properties to recover the cost of reimbursement for the water and wastewater infrastructure installed by the city of tax year 2024, and set a public hearing date for August 26, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the landfill monitoring and maintenance district for fiscal year 2025, and levy and assess all properties within the district. Commissioners? Is there any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the landfill monitoring and maintenance district for fiscal year 2025, and levy and assess all property within the district, and to set a public hearing date for August 26, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the open space maintenance district number one for fiscal year 2025, and to levy and assess all properties within the district. Commissioners? Do we have any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the open space maintenance district number one for fiscal year 2025, levying and assessing all property within the district, and to set a public hearing for August 26, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution of intentions to levy and assess properties to recover the cost of removal of snow and ice from sidewalks on the adjacent public rights of way for tax year 2024, and set a public hearing date. Commissioners? Do we have any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution of intention to levy and assess properties to recover the cost of removal of snow and ice from sidewalks on the adjacent public's rights of way, and to set a public hearing date for August 26, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the stormwater utility service area for fiscal year 2025, and levy and assess all properties within the service. Commissioners? Are there any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve the resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the stormwater utility service area for fiscal year 2025, levy and assess all property within the service, and to set a public hearing date for August 26, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution of intention to levy assessments for the improvements of sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and alleys approached in the city of Helena, Montana for tax year 2024. Commissioners? Are there any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I, thank you. I move to approve a resolution of intention to levy assessments for the improvement of sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and alley approaches in the city of Helena, Montana for the tax year of 2024, and to set a public hearing date.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the special streetlight districts for fiscal year 2025, and levy and assess all properties within the district. Commissioners? Are there any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the special streetlighting districts for fiscal year 2024, and levy and assess all properties within the districts, and set a public hearing date.
Mr. Mayor, just really briefly, this is not on Commissioner Logan. It's supposed to be FY '25, even though it does say '24 in the memo, in the recommended motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dean.
Okay.
I can restate the motion if you'd like.
Would you please?
Yes. I move to approve, and thank you, Commissioner Dean, I move to approve a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the special light, special streetlighting districts for fiscal year 2025, and levy and assess all properties, property within the districts, and set a public hearing date.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Are there any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain, oh, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk. Jeez.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the street maintenance and improvement district number one for fiscal year 2025, and levy and assess all properties within the district. Commissioners? Are there any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the streets maintenance and improvement district number one for fiscal year 2025, and levy and assess all properties within the district, and to set a public hearing date of August 26, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
You know, Madam Clerk, I have not been asking about online. I hope you've been checking to see if we have any online comments.
Mr. Mayor, I have been checking online.
Okay, thank you. Consider a resolution of intention to specify assessment option for the special urban forestry district for fiscal year 2025, and levy and assess all properties within the district. Commissioners? Are there any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve a resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the special urban forest management district for fiscal year 2025, and levy and assess on all property within the district, and to set a public hearing on August 26, 2024.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution expanding the boundaries of the street maintenance and improvement district for, district number one for fiscal year 2025. Commissioners? Are there any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move to approve a resolution expanding the boundaries of the street maintenance and improvement district number one for fiscal year 2025.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution expanding the boundaries of the open space maintenance district one for fiscal year 2025. Commissioners? Are there any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk. I'll entertain a motion, I apologize.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution expanding the boundaries to the open space maintenance district number one for fiscal year 2025.
Second. It's been moved and seconded and final discussion. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Okay, at this time, we want to call Planner Alvarez, if you want to tell us what's going on with this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. I am Planner Alvarez as introduced. This item was to be a zone change from R2 to R3 for 102 South Cook Street. A copy of the ordinance was not included in tonight's meeting packet, therefore staff requests the item be tabled until the applicant's next available date, which is September 23rd, in order to ensure the mayor and commission and the public have sufficient notice regarding the language of the proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Planner Alvarez. Commissioners, any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I would move to table first passage of an ordinance amending City of Helena ordinance number 3097 and the official zoning map for the city of Helena that changes the zoning district from R2 residential to R3 residential for the property legally described as lots 18 through 20 in block 29 of the Corbin Division in the city of Helena, Corbin subdivision in the city of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana.
So, second. And then if I could make a brief comment. I think, I have, I think there were a number of people in the public that were probably wishing to make public comment potentially missed.
I'm about to give that.
Okay, I've, just, this is the Cook Street one, is that accurate?
Yes, Mayor and Commission.
Okay, do we have any public comments on this? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded and final discussion. Madam Clerk. Go ahead.
Mayor and Commission, if I may, I did email members of the public prior to tonight's meeting at the last minute and received a reply from some of them that they understood.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Planner Alvarez, I'm sorry, did not hear, what is the new date?
26. Thank you, Mayor and Commission, September 23rd.
September 23rd, thank you.
Any other comments from the Commission? It's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion to table carries five to zero.
Thank you. Item O, we'll turn it over to our esteemed city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I recommend that this item be tabled this evening and we'll bring it back at a future commission meeting for action by the governing body.
Thank you. Commissioners? Please, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city manager. If we could just, for the public, explain why we're tabling a little bit, that might be helpful. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Mayor, Commissioner, I think we've got a little more outreach to do on this project and people being absent and whatnot, it just, we just decided that it'd probably be best to table this until a future commission meeting. I think that a lot of work has gone into this and I think that most parties are on the same page relative to public safety and the use of, and movement of traffic through the Capitol complex, but I think we have a little more work to do as well.
And just a quick follow-up, I was hoping you'd bail me out with the dates, but if I'm not mistaken, there are a couple of public outreach meetings planned on this topic. Do you happen to know those dates for those who are interested?
Mayor, Commissioner, I do not have that information offhand, but I can certainly get it to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I believe, one of them is on the 14th, is an open house.
14th of?
September. I believe it was September, we should probably check that, though.
Now you're going on the record.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I've got on their website, the public notice for a traffic plan update, open house is August 14th, four to six.
Thank you, Commissioner Shertliff. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain, did we have the, it's been moved and seconded and that's final discussion. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to table.
Oh, geez.
The capital traffic plan proposal, which includes one-way streets in Ingle Park along Fifth, Sixth, and Locky Avenue.
Second. It's been moved and seconded and final discussion. Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion to table carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution modifying the distribution of Helena Affordable Housing Trust Fund for United Housing Partners LLC to Twin Creek Four Housing Associate LLP for new multifamily housing construction. Director Brink, Anne or Anne Pichet, you have the floor, whoever, whichever.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. You have before you tonight this consideration of approval for this resolution to modify the distribution of the funds. These funds, as you have in your packet, were already distributed, approved through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and through the commission. During the process, the developers have gone through to put together their full funding package for this large project. It has now become necessary for them to change the entity for the award and the entity that will be responsible for signing all of the loan documents and responsible for producing this project. And so, we do have the developer here as well, if you have specific questions, but before you is to be able to change the entity. I do want to make sure that you understand the reason we've brought it to you and for the public to understand is that while the project as a whole is still going to be 72 affordable apartment units, the entity that will be signing the City of Helena loan documents is the Twin Creek Four, they are responsible for 52 of those 72 units. So, we just want to make sure that the commission is aware of that. This whole project is still going to be 72, they're still going to meet all of the income requirements and all of the period of affordability, but we wanted the commission and the public to have that opportunity to know that on paper, it's going to look a little bit different than what was presented and approved by you previously.
Thank you. Commissioners? Do we have any public comments on this topic?
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the commission, my name is Seth O'Connell. I'm here representing the developer, United Housing Partners, and I am also a member of Twin Creek Four Housing Associates LLP. Over the past year and a half, I've come before the commission several times now, asking for help on various challenges that we faced in bringing this project forward. We have been faced with economic design and financial constraints that have required ingenuity to overcome. The deal's tight and affordable housing is tough to do right now, as I've told you several times. We are resourceful, but we could not do this alone. Every time that I've come before, both the commission and various city departments, we have found that the city has been willing and able partner that has made conscious decisions to support this project. For that reason, we wanted to thank you. Thank you for your trust and your commitment to Twin Creeks, for the commitment to the community as well for bringing these new apartments forward. Because of this partnership, I'm proud to say that we expect to close on all the financing, which is pretty complicated, as Anne was explaining, it's several different sources. And the way that we levered this project is we had to bring 9% and 4% tax credits together, which I won't get into the complications of that, but they, those funds cannot be commingled. So, we did meet with the financial department Director Danielson, as well as the legal department, and talked about why this has to be distinguished to the limited partnership and not to United Housing Partners. And that's mostly because our tax credit syndicator would never let the loan be in the name of the individual developer, it has to be in a partnership. Anyways, because of our partnership with you guys, in less than two years, we are proud to say we will deliver 72 apartments that will be 100% rent restricted to the city of Helena, including 12 rent restricted apartments to extreme low-income beneficiaries earning 30% or less of the area of medium income. I've said it before and I'll say it again, I do not think this project would be where it is and we'd be able to deliver if it wasn't for the commitment of the housing trust funds. It's been a huge part of it and I think that it's, it what really pushed us over the line in making Helena stand out on this project. Tonight, what I'm here for is an administrative amendment changing the name of the borrower from United Housing Partners, the developer, to the limited partnership, which is a partnership that is United Housing Partners and a tax credit syndicator, the partner that will sell the tax credits on the market. We have to be joined in that way. And we're asking the city also to prepare for the approval of the full $1 million of the construction loan minus the retainages that are required, because we will need these funds to close the project and it could save us as much as $100,000 on a tight deal and interest by waiting to collect on our, our construction loan, our regular construction loan. So, again, more than anything, I'm up here to thank you guys and say, we're this close and we're going to deliver this, we're planning to close on August 27th and we'll start moving dirt and hopefully next month we'll have a groundbreaking, but this change is a very small change, it'll still be United Housing Partners that you're working with as your partner. Is there any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. Commissioners? Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on this topic? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve a resolution modifying the distribution of Helena Affordable Housing Trust Funds from a United Housing Partners LLC to Twin Creek Four Housing Associates LLP for new multifamily housing construction.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded and final discussion. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Public hearings. Consider a resolution to set fees to be charged for various land use and subdivision review applications within the planning division of the Department of Community Development, repealing Resolution Number 11093 and providing for a policy for the waiver of fees. Director Brink, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. So, tonight before you is the actual public hearing for consideration of this resolution for fees that are charged by the planning division, repealing that set ordinance that established those fees in 1997. And that is not working. There we go. And again, setting some policy for the waiver fees that, that I've mentioned in the past. So, for some background, our current fees were adopted January, January of 1997 and you've seen before where I count down the years and months, that's 27 years, six months, and 30 days. How many hours? Oh goodness, I actually have that written down, but I do not have it before you tonight. So, these are the current fees that are, that we currently charge for land use applications and zone changes, all of our entitlement processes, again, static since 1997. These are proposed fees and the three-year rollout that I've mentioned before, that will, will employ various changes to these fees for each fiscal year, concluding with fiscal year 2027. And I've given the rationale behind why we've, we've elected this fee schedule as we're proposing. We've done a full deep analysis of recovery costs for these fees and these services and we're proposing a plan to at least recover half of our fees or half of the, what it costs to provide these services for these various applications. And as I've mentioned before, and we've had discussion relative to how we can, can help the community with, with these fees, you notice with the red arrow, we've created a new fee that, that was not part of original or part of the, the previous fee schedule and that is combination zone change and CUP. We've done a full analysis of what that combination application supplemental looks like and then there you, there you have the, the full recovery cost and then the final fee is set at half of that recovery cost. Fee comparisons, so I'm not a fan of comparing fees with our jurisdiction, our sister jurisdictions other than to, to capture or to, to view that, review that we're not far off base with what, what we're charging. Jurisdictions have different processes, different reviews, different level of, of reviews and level of detail. So, while it's, it's, it's a value to, to see what other jurisdictions are, are doing, we've strictly done an analysis based on what we do as a city and what it charges, what it costs the city to provide the service. So, we've, we've mentioned before in previous discussions, a proposal to perhaps look at a, a fee waiver policy. Staff has proposed a fee waiver policy in the draft resolution that you have before you, that's found in Section 2 of that draft resolution. It's just a general fee waiver policy. There will be some application supplemental requirements. As part of that, you have to demonstrate a pure civic benefit for the request, for the waiver and the application has to show a, a true civic benefit. Shows some prevailing public interest of the waiver request. We've proposed that as part of one of the requirements or allowances is that you show or articulate less than 60 AMI and a period of affordability for larger collaborative projects that you've sistered with the Lytech Affordable Housing Trust Fund, CWBG Historic Preservation, that there's some other entity that you're, you're seeking funds and assistance from as well. And then for, for, for low-income property owners, either be it residential or commercial project, that there's some income verification. There are, there will be a public hearing required for these fee waivers and that approval is by you, Mayor and Commission, by a resolution. We've kind of tried to mirror and mimic the fee waiver policy for building fees for affordable housing projects, knowing this is general fund, that is a special fund, so there's other complications around that, but it's still approved by, based on, on a, on a resolution. Public engagement at notice. Throughout this whole process, we've, we've had a, a presence on the city website under community development for what, for what, for our work and our proposed fee changes. Prior to this public hearing, we did draft a letter and sent out to approximately 30 key stakeholders in the community. We did get some feedback. As of today, as a matter of fact, we've received two written public comments and I will go briefly, a lot of words, but I'll try to go through as quick as I can, but I want to capture exactly what's on these screens relative to these comments and how staff is, is responding to these, these, these comments that we received. One question we've received, will the city be doing their own COS amended plat review when the COS amended plat fee is implemented as we've got in our schedule? Currently, we do not have that fee. It is a new proposed fee. Or will applicants be required to pay review, review fees both to the city, city and Lewis and Clark County? Yes. So, we will be doing our own COS amended plat review and that's distinguished with the examining and land surveyor review that the county does at the county level, two separate fees. However, the city, the county also charges a COS amended plat fee similar to ours as we've proposed and, and still there's that examining, examining land surveyor review that is also charged too. Another public comment, this was from the Home Builders Industry Association that we received Friday after close of business. Commission should have that in their packet. If not, it was emailed to everybody from the, from the comment tour. Fees allocated to the planning division should go to supporting enhanced planning services, 100% agree, with demonstrable improvement in services. As we've, as I've mentioned before, the fees that we're proposing, it's not designed to make planning function of the city self-sustaining. There is a responsibility for the general public to also participate in, in planning services that we provide. As I've mentioned, our division is a general fund-supported function of the City of Helena government. With yearly budget request, as staff did with this fiscal year, knowing we're proposing some fee increases, we provided an estimate revenue for the fiscal year based on what we anticipate our workload relative to the, the fee increases for this current fiscal year. With the intent that our general fund expense requests reflect our revenues, ultimately being general fund-supported, my division or the planning division relies on appropriation from the governing body or from, from the commission relative to, to planning services. So, we would, we would hope that with, even with these fee increases, that you would continue to, to support planning services with the city, but it's not intended to make us self-sustaining. Uh, comparable with other jurisdictions and lack of, lack of equity in these fees, uh, like I mentioned before, previously, it's really difficult at best, uh, to compare our fees with, with what other jurisdictions are doing. Operations look different, processes look different, level of staff review and detail is different. And ultimately, the regular review by the other jurisdictions may skew what our comparisons are. Um, Lewis and Clark County, while we see, while recently having adopted and, and revised zoning in the county, they have vastly different variance processes in the city. That was one of the, the comments, is why is our variance fees so vastly different? Our processes look different, the level of detail is different. Uh, again, City of Billings, uh, which we compared closely with the city relative to their fee schedule and their processes and their level of detail. They conduct annual reviews of their fees. Um, they just recently updated their fees in 2024. I'm not sure about 2025. Um, I've not been able to verify, but I would anticipate if, if history holds true that they too reviewed their fees in 2025 and have increased their fees. Um, comment comparing fiscal year 27 variance fees with Billings fee, well, not until 27 does our variance fees become even, become more than what the current, uh, City of Billings fees are. Um, again, in two years, City of Billings will probably review their fees twice, if not three times, and that will even increase. So we're still under or will be under, um, even what the most comparable city is, that City of Billings. Uh, based on the current fee structure and schedule, uh, the general public supports up to 90% in most cases of the planning services that we provide or required of private development. So if a private developer comes and submits that application, the general public typically supports 90% of that work, not the development community. For reference, annexations, uh, currently the public supports or pays 90% of that service. Uh, CUPs, uh, public currently pays and supports 80% of that service, not the developer, the public does. Um, and there was a comment based on, or a comment relative to passing these fees on to developers or to individual homeowners, just for reference, 100-lot subdivision is going to incur a $21.25 additional fee per lot in that development. That to me is, is not insurmountable. Introduction to new fees, absolutely. We do a lot of work that we don't charge for. Expedited review and administrative review of minors, um, we've, we've talked about Senate Bill 382 and unfunded mandates. We need to look at our fees based on the new work that we're required to do under Senate Bill 382. Um, the work in review required, just for instance, a new, new fee is phase development reviews. I'll just reference West Side Woods and Mountview Meadows with those phase subdivisions. Each of those phases are required to come before you to be approved to move on to that phase. There's mailings, there's letters, there's certified letters, there's public notice, there's packet materials, there's staff reports, there's a lot of work just to get that, um, phase development, um, approval to you so you can approve that, that phase. For individual commercial site reviews, we had hoped and have proposed by instituting a separate process, so we're going to pull out the site review process for commercial reviews out of the building permit review, that the community, the development community should realize an efficiency in project approval. Uh, currently, site reviews are part of the building permit process that are stated, which could hold up site approval and construction on a site while the building permit is under, under review. Uh, as we proposed, uh, we're setting a fee for that as well to do the work. Uh, but site reviews could happen in most cases, months before building permit is even submitted for review, and that infrastructure work can happen before the building permits are even submitted. Uh, so yes, we are instituting a new fee for a new process that we were hoping would, would benefit the development community. And there are some remaining fees that are on the schedule. While new in title, there are actually reductions in fees of what, um, what the current fees would equate to. Just for instance, zone change with the CUP that I mentioned earlier, if we leave it separated with the zone change and a CUP process, um, based on the 2027 fee, final fee, it would be a $2,200 charge. As we've proposed, combining it, it's an $1,800 charge. Um, extensions and amendments and variances to a preliminary plat. Um, in 2027, um, that fee would be $2,125 for each one of those without this new fee. Well, with this new fee for each one of those three processes respectively, those fees are now 1,200, 1,150 and 825 dollars respectively. Um, so there are new fees. I get it, yes, there are, uh, but they're all new fees in the schedule where they're actually reductions of what we would charge without these new fees being implemented. Oh, I thought I had more. So, questions? I know that was a lot. Um, public comment was, was last minute, so staff tried to, to analyze the, the public comments and hopefully we gave a pretty succinct, um, not rebuttal, but, but, uh...
Response.
Response to those, to those comments. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioners, any comment or questions? Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, and thank you, Director Brink. I appreciate the fee waiver policy. Um, I appreciate that you have a number of different ways to meet it. I think it's a great first step, and if it seems like we need to change it somehow, that seems like an option, but I'm, I'm grateful that we did the work and came up with what looks like a really excellent first attempt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner Reed.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first, I just want to thank staff for all of their work in this process. Um, given how brief your presentation was, I don't think it gives, uh, quite an idea of how much work has gone into all of this, so very appreciative of, of what you've done here. Um, as Commissioner Reed noted, um, very supportive and excited to have the, um, draft waiver or the proposed waiver in here. I think that, um, just given some of the comments that we even heard in the previous item from Mr. O'Connell, um, putting together low-income or affordable housing projects is very difficult, um, and any way that we can help incentivize and, um, be helpful is a good thing. Um, one thing I just wanted to direct the public to if they, um, did not go through our very large packet that we have today, uh, starting on page 219, um, there are a number of pages that provide a, um, fee analysis for each of the proposed fees that we have. It's a really exceptional breakdown of what actually goes into putting together this fee amount. Um, I think most people would probably be, um, quite surprised at how much staff time and, um, public notice costs, um, actually are required, uh, to, to do these jobs well. And so, um, I think that is a really helpful thing for any member of the public that's interested in learning more about where these numbers come from, um, and how they're developed. But I'm excited that we are moving in this direction. Um, 1997 was a very long time ago, um, and I, it's high time that we reflect, um, the work that actually goes into, um, these kind of development review processes. I would also just note that I think that phasing this over three fiscal years gives us an opportunity to, one, continue to evaluate, but two, um, provide a roadmap for developers so they know what the associated costs will look like, um, over the next three fiscal years. And, um, I think this is a good step in the right direction and just want to thank staff for their work.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Uh, and I would just want to close too, ultimately, all we were trying to do is just be equitable to who's paying the fees. We, we recognize, and you've heard me before, staff recognize the importance of the public participating in what we do too, but it needs to be equitable across the board.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director Brink. Can you speak a little bit about the public outreach and, uh, the discussions you've had with stakeholders and the feedback that you've received?
So, uh, thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. So, we've tried our utmost best to, to really engage. Now, have we met with anybody one-on-one? No, um, throughout this process, uh, but it has been no secret, all the presentations that we've made, not only to you, but the presence on the website, social media, uh, the direct ask for feedback, uh, from our key stakeholders. Um, and we did get, get feedback from the, the two that did respond, and it got us to think and, and have a better, sound explanation about why we're, we're raising the fees. We've not really presented that to you, but this gave us an opportunity to, to present that, um, that sound reasoning why, why we're looking at fees. I'm never a fee, fan of, of, of increasing fees, never. But there comes a point after 30 years, you, you have to at least revisit and just see where we are. And it was shocking to see where we were relative to, to what we provide and what we're ultimately charged by from the, from the general fund.
Leader? Okay, thank you. Do we have any question, uh, public comments on this topic?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Commissioners, um, my name is Brent Cotton. I'm the, uh, president of the HBIA, excuse me, the Helena Building Industry Association. Uh, we represent 150 local businesses within the building industry. On behalf of the members, we want to say that, um, we have concerns over this. Um, we have submitted a letter for your review, but I wanted to point out a couple of key things. Um, the Helena, uh, Building Industry Association would like, um, detailed information on how additional revenue from increased fees will be used, um, within the Planning Division. Um, we would like better understanding of the methods used to determine the proposed rates because of some of the increases seem out of line with other locations and don't seem to make sense. Um, and we oppose the introduction of new fees completely. The fees seemed, uh, duplicative and imposed new additional burdens on potential homeowners in different, um, excuse me, in, in a difficult time. These costs will absolutely be based along to your past, excuse me, along to your members already struggling under high interest rates and inflation. Many residents of, of Helena cannot qualify, qualify for a home loan, and the City of Helena proposed to increase the cost of a home even more. We absolutely oppose and feel this will only make housing crisis in Helena worse. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, just really briefly, can I ask a question of the public comment?
Go ahead.
Um, for, for the Helena Building and Industry Association. So I'm not sure... Thanks. No, you're good. Um, this is something that was new, um, compared to some of the previous packets we got, but, um, in the agenda packet today, there's a breakdown that looks like this.
Okay.
For each of the fees, um, I don't know if this would be helpful for your members or not, but it does include, um, for each fee, the, um, personnel, so how many people, their hourly pay, and then how many hours it takes for, on average, each of those reviews. Um, the public notice cost, so paper, envelope, certified mail, signs, um, other, and then any technology costs. Um, and then that calculates that into the, um, the total fee. So I think if that's, might be helpful to your members, um, that breaks down the cost that goes into every single fee.
Okay, that's great. Uh, thank you.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And is Director Danielson? Yes. Uh, if you, I think this has come up a couple of times. If, if possible, could you speak to the issue of increased revenue for community development and how it's not actually an increase in revenue, but it's less of a general fund, um, situation? Cause my words are clearly not serving me, so if you could just clarify that issue, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Commissioner Reed. So, um, I, I know that this, with community development, um, considering these, these fee increases, I, you know, I, I did, you know, speak with him, I spoke with a prior Community Development Services Director, um, in looking at, um, these fees in comparison to fees, um, throughout Montana, um, I think that what they're, what they're proposing is, is comparative to other cities. I do know that, um, for services provided, the Community Development, uh, Division within the city right now is almost 100% funded by property tax dollars. Um, and there is increasing pressure on the general fund, um, from inflationary aspects and only being able to raise our property tax, one half the rate of inflation, average rate of inflation over the prior three years, um, and the competing interests within the general fund for fire services, police services, um, parks and recreation services, and, um, uh, it, it's difficult, um, you know, to, to implement fee increases to those that are directly impacted, but I think across the board, I think that, um, it's, it's a, it, it, it presents a way to help some cost recovery in the community development so that we can continue to, um, prioritize other services within the general fund, um, such as, you know, what I mentioned, police, fire, parks and recreation services. There's just a lot of competing interests for, um, limited resources within the general fund. Does that answer your question? Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution setting fees charged for various land use and subdivision review applications within the Planning Division of the Department of the Community Develop, of Community Development, repealing Resolution Number 11093 and providing for a policy for the waiver of fees.
Second. As we move and second it, any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
No.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to one.
Consider final passage of an ordinance revising the regulations of signs by amending Chapter 23 Title 11 of the Helena Citizens Code by repealing and replacing Chapter 23 General Signs Regulation in its entirety and adopting the new Chapter 23 Sign Regulation in lieu thereof. Planner Alvarez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. As introduced, I am Michael Alvarez, the planner with the Community Development Department. Uh, my item tonight is the new Chapter 23 of Title 11 concerning the regulation of signs. Special note, um, a copy of the proposed sign ordinance has not been included with the item's packet materials. Uh, the ordinance is unchanged since it was last presented to the mayor and commission. Um, it's the same one from the admin meeting, same one from, uh, first passage. Hard copies are available to the public present in commission chambers, and a digital copy can be found online under the 71524, city commission meeting date, under file sign update 2023-053124. Um, I would ask that the, um, mayor and commission, um, ask city attorney doctor whether or not staff has done enough to ensure public access to the ordinance that I may proceed with the presentation.
Mayor, Commissioners, I, he, Planner Alvarez did speak with me prior to this meeting, and it was my opinion that there is sufficient public and commission notice. The ordinance was posted, as Planner Alvarez already mentioned, online. It's here on the dais for people to pick up. It also has not changed at all in substance since the last two times it was posted, and therefore, uh, I believe that sufficient public notice has been given.
Please continue, Planner Alvarez.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Uh, so specifically tonight, the city commission will be voting for, against, or to table an ordinance that amends Chapter 23 of Title 11 of the Helena City Code by repealing Chapter 23 General Sign Regulations in its entirety, in its entirety, and adopting this new Chapter 23 Sign Regulations in lieu thereof. There are recommended conditions attached to this ordinance that will be listed at the end. Uh, the authority to regulate signs comes from state code, Section 7214206, which gives the city control over the erection of on-premise and off-premise signs and onings, and Section 7515104, which gives the city more specific power to further regulate off-premise signage in ways that are more restrictive than state law. Uh, the city sign code is being reviewed in large part because of the Reed versus Town of Gilbert Supreme Court decision. Uh, this decision requires content neutrality... This decision requires content neutrality from the city sign code. The city can still regulate the things that our sign code proposes, such as size, locations, lighted and unlit signs, whether or not it has a fixed message or electronic, or electronic changeable copy, whether or not it's on, we can distinguish between private and public property, commercial and residential property, on-premise and off-premise, restrict the total number of signs, and exclude the government putting up its own directional, historic, or scenic signs. So on your screen here are a couple of images from that case. Without going into too much detail, the Town of Gilbert was sued for imposing a different time limit on the sign on the right from the other temporary signs up around the town. The Town of Gilbert was allowing different types of speech, to have different sizes of signs, and to have those signs erected for different lengths of time. SCOTUS's ruling said that that was not content neutral, and so content neutrality has to be maintained in our code. The current state of the sign code poses several issues for, for the city. Elements of the current code not being content neutral is first and foremost, but the code also handles wall signage on larger buildings in a way that generates frequent applications for variance. The code is difficult to read. It can be non-obvious what sections pertain to a given sign. The code has outdated references to zone types and administrative areas, no longer in use. And similar to our fee schedule, the code hasn't been updated comprehensively since nineteen ninety-seven, and may not reflect the current goals and objectives of the city as stated in the growth policy. aims of the new code are, of course, increased conformance with recent legal rulings to improve the clarity in the signage regulation, to ensure that the current needs of the community are being met. The intent chap, the intent statement of the new chapter, the intent of the sign code is to provide standards for the design, placement, and erection of signage. The standards established by this chapter are intended to provide equal opportunity for messages to be displayed, achieve proper relationship of signs to their environment, enhance the outward appearance of the community, secure pedestrian vehicular safety, and preserve the historic aspects of the city. And I would stress with this intent statement, what we're aiming, most important is, of course, that content neutrality. In terms of improving clarity, the new sign ordinance is going to introduce easy-to-understand tables for permitted and unpermitted sign types and faces by district. Up on your screen here are table one, we have table one and two, which differentiate sign types by whether they are located on the building or elsewhere on the site. Table three, which is not pictured here, deals with the face type of the signage. The new sign ordinance also introduces simple design guidelines by sign type, for instance, wall signage, sign here, so you can look up by a sign and find the regulations by either their location on the property or by just the, the style of sign that you're looking The new sign ordinance has eliminated references to administrative areas no longer in use or in conflict with other areas of the code. This sample code is from the existing sign code, and this passage is one of my favorites because it gives the Board of Adjustments powers they aren't granted elsewhere, refers to the OSR, NC, B three, and urban renewal districts, and which are all either defunct or out of use. One of the key changes is being made to the sign standards, is that signs will scale with building facades in most commercial districts. Moving forward under the proposed codes, architects and designers will be allowed to scale signage up to fifteen percent of each facade with the proposed condition language at the end. The proposed code further builds on offering flexibility to businesses by introducing a planned sign program provision that allows for coordinating signage size on larger multi-building developments. So hard capping wall signage in aggregate for all sides of a building in B two at two hundred square feet has frequently seen businesses apply for and receive variances to allow signage that is better matched to the size of the, of their facades and to surrounding neighbors that have large facades and have already been granted such variances. And while the previous granting of the, those variances doesn't automatically mean we have to grant those variances again, practically speaking, not granting that, a similar variance, variance in a similar location opens the city to scrutiny over arbitrary and capricious decisions. Basically meaning, we have, in various parts of the city, the, the standard has been set that is just not captured in code at all. So here we see examples of signs on a building at different facade percentages. They range from ten to thirty and twelve and a half. Unfortunately, I don't have fifteen specifically here, but after some negotiations with the zoning commission, that was the number they arrived at. The new proposed code also introduces building business permits, which is our cap and replace program for billboards. The proposed sign code will bring the business of billboards into alignment with the rest of the business community by requiring that billboards operated in the city limits obtain business permits. Currently, all businesses operating in the city of Helena must license each location where their business is conducted, but billboard locations have historically been left out of that accounting. The billboard business permit allows the city to control the number and type of billboard faces in the community. The fee is paid to the general fund, and the amount is intended to help cover the costs of running the program. I'll elaborate here, since this question was asked in the, when presented as a regular item. This program requires staff to monitor the building, billboards, and to maintain ownership records of the BBPs. This program is effectively going to be creating a market for the permits because of the cap, and it will require staff time to regulate that market. The program is going to be funded through an annual renewal of the BBP, similar to how all other commercial businesses' locations in the city are required to renew annually. The program caps the number of billboards at its current count, and trying to fund the construction of a future billboard may leave the program unfunded indefinitely. So when I was asked the question in the regular, bringing this forward as a regular item, I think I undersold that if we try to assess this fee to the next billboard that is being built, as we have heard in public comment as a proposal, there is no next billboard potentially going up because we are capping at the current amount. So in order for this program to be funded, it needs to be funded and assessed annually. New electronic message display standards. So the proposed sign code will implement new light standards. Electronic message displays must have ambient light monitors that automatically adjust their brightness and shall not exceed point three foot candles above ambient light when measured, according to table four. This is an industry standard that was brought to us by the sign, by the sign industry professionals. Scrolling, traveling, or flashing images will not be permitted. An on-premise sign may only change the entire static image once every two seconds, and a digital billboard once every seven and a half seconds, which is the current standard. The city's lighting ordinance currently covers signs. It is also considered our dark sky initiative. However, it's more tailored to lights than signs. So for instance, lights brighter than the equivalent of a hundred fifty watt bulb need a horizontal cutoff, but that regulation exempts signs in commercial areas. So in the code, practically speaking, for them, for the code to agree with the lighting ordinance, it means electronic message centers who LED, whose LEDs can't have a horizontal cutoff can't be placed in a residential zone. Light trespass from any light source begins at point five foot candles measured at the property boundary. Signs face outwards by, by their design, so you can see them. The proposed sign code then is also weighing in the factor of whether the sign causes a detriment to any property or impacts the peaceful use of a residence. The maximum height of a sign has been lowered by one foot in some commercial zones and now matches the lighting ordinance. This change makes for better clarity of the code as well. We used to have in the sign code different heights in different commercial districts of thirty-four feet in one and thirty-five feet in another, just adding to confusion. It's all thirty-four feet now. The maximum illumination of thirty candle feet unless, I'm sorry, just to back up, unless the residential zoning district's height limit is lower, in which case a sign can't exceed that. However, all our standards are beneath that, those in the residential areas. The maximum illumination of thirty candle feet in a commercial zone does apply, however, to signs. However, this doesn't really come up. That is about the recommended illumination for something like a basketball court or indoors at a manufacturing plant, quite bright. But it does apply to signs. The city of Helena is seeking with this code to promote business while embracing the uniqueness and natural beauty of Helena's setting. There is a balancing act being performed, performed by the proposed sign code in supporting the community's economic vitality and complementing the aesthetics of the city. This performance is directed by goals one and ten on your screen, and objectives sixty-nine, seventy-six, and eighty-five of the growth policy. And our recommended motion language is up on your screen. Happy to take your questions.
Commissioner?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Planner Alvarez. Got a question regarding variances. How will this new, new language deal with variances? And I'll add a little caveat real quick. I'm also on the Board of Adjustments, and we've had discussions over the last year or so regarding signs on Sanders Avenue. And we had looked it up, and it was every sign had gone above the, the standard in terms of size, and then the Board of Vari, the Board of Adjustments had said, okay, you get this much, you get this much, you get, they basically said, here's the average, and we're going to stick with that. How are we going to deal with variances with this new language?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. It's really the intention here that we're reducing the total number of variances requested for those big box stores in style that are on Sanders Avenue. They are going to simply be allowed to have a larger size sign because they have a larger facade, and the percentage of sign that they're allowed to have is scaled to the facade. So the last Sander Street variance that I handled, we ended up where two hundred square feet in aggregate was what was allowed for the building. I believe we allowed something like four hundred and seventy is what ended up getting built on that building in three signs, or on three sides. It's really the intention that they, they don't need to come forward with a variance because we're just simply allowing for, for a larger side, that sized sign that should look appropriate on that building without the hard cap.
Follow up real quick, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. And on the flip side of that, we had, in the Board of Adjustment, had received a request to almost double the size of a sign along the highway for a convenience store, and they wanted two of those signs. And we had said no. Will this language empower us to be able to say no if it's more than the law allows?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Absolutely. So the, this sign code actually has removed direct reference to the Board of Adjustments. The Board of Adjustment section of city code gives them the power over variances from the standard for signage specifically. The hope, or not the hope, by having a brand-new chapter for sign regulations, the, the slate is largely swept clean from what was approved in the past. It's under a new law, and the, the Board of Adjustments doesn't need to necessarily give the, the same weight to variances granted in the past since the standard has changed. Thank you.
Any other comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Alvarez, when this subject came before us in October, it seemed like there was some fairly, I don't want to say overwhelming, but there was a lot of negative public comment, particularly from businesses who are going to be impacted by that. And, you know, we may hear in a little bit of that, but I was wondering if the tenor has changed any in the business community relative to, as you've worked on the ordinance to get to this point, if the tenor has changed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Yes, I, I would say with the on-premise sign community, I think the response has generally been very positive for, for the changes that we are making here. I think there was agreement with the sign community that our regulations were in need of updating and certainly simplifying in terms of, of being able to read, read the code. I know that there is one outstanding complaint that we've heard, I'm sorry, comment, that we've heard repeated a number of times, and that is about the distance, the three hundred feet from a residential district for an electronic message center and having to turn that off at night, or after, or either at night or after business hours during that time period. So the current standard for electronic message centers near residential areas is one hundred feet, and in visual, and in a visual line to the residential district. So it needs to be visible and within a hundred feet, and, or, or, I'm sorry, a electronic message center under the current code cannot be visible or within, within a hundred feet of a residential area. I can get through that sentence. And if the city commission wanted to, to alter that to the current standard, that would be the current standard, if you wanted to address that one complaint. Otherwise, for the feedback from the on-premise sign community, I think, has been very productive and positive, and we've had a lot of solid interactions with them.
Any other comments from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you guys for your time. My name is Kelly Strobo. I'm from Lamar. I'm representing, and I'm just, a couple of things, and I appreciate Mr. Alvarez, the staff. It's been, these, some of those regulations bringing up to date are not easy.
I'm sorry.
They can be lengthy, and there's always gray areas, and it's just trying to find a happy medium to get both parties to agree upon. But in regards to the off-premise side of things, it's eleven twenty-three eleven C, which is the billboard business, the, the annual permit fees. Realistically, there's only two people that are going to be affected by that, and that's us, Lamar, which we have a majority of the signs here in, in, in the city of Helena, and also Yescow. And I know that the funds, the annual funds are going to a general fund, but I don't know if two thousand dollars to the general fund is going to make that big of a deal. I think, I guess, I, I'm here, obviously, and we've been talking about it in the past, for the past probably year or whatever this has been going on, to eliminate, see altogether, the permit, the annual permit fees. What I've suggested is to increase the actual permit fees themselves when we initially pay it. For example, the one we just had replaced on the interstate, it was, I know it's a ten six thirty-six, which is a bulletin, and I think our minimum fee, I think we paid like two or three hundred dollars for that. And if the fee would have been moved and moved to like three dollars and fifty cents square feet, per square foot, which is real- like, two or three hundred dollars for that. And if the fee would have been moved and moved to, like, three dollars and fifty cents square feet, per square foot, which is real close to what Mr. Brink said, they're comparing apples to apples with, with the City of Billings, um, that permit alone would have been close to twenty-seven hundred dollars just by itself. Um, I know that the city wants to get rid of billboards, and that's why there's now a cap and replacement. But for example, like, if there's a couple signs that are multiple support poles, and we wanna convert those into conforming and bring it into a single pole, that would be considered a whole brand-new permit fee for both signs, which that, and I know that's a smaller one, but that permit fee alone is gonna be close to seventeen hundred dollars, um, if, if it was to be changed to an, the updated fees for an individual permit versus the annual permit fees. I just think it's gonna be difficult to monitor. I think that, um, I feel that, what are we paying for? Are we gonna be issued an actual permit fee each, or permit plate each year that goes on the billboards? Um, how are we gonna, how are they gonna be monitored? We just, there's a lot of things that are kinda still in the gray area. So I just, again, I appreciate your guys' time. I thank you for your guys' time, and, uh, I would like to see just the eleven, eleven twenty-three, eleven C., just the, the permitting fees scratched out. But I do appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Collins, uh, Commissioners, my name's Bob Alvarez. Uh, I'm with YESCO Outdoor Media. We're a billboard company here in the state of Montana headquartered here in the City of Billing, or, excuse me, City of Helena. We also just wanted to reiterate the comments from Lamar on the fee structure, um, to kinda take a little bit of different approach. No agency in the city of, or in the state of Montana has such a fee structure. For that matter, no state in the surrounding area has a comparable fee structure, and the concern is that this is gonna set precedence where this industry has been operated a certain way since its, since its inception, and now we may see it completely changed over by the actions, uh, potentially by the City of Helena. Um, the, the process to get us to this point's been absolutely fantastic. Um, Michael Alvarez and his team have been great to work with and been extremely receptive to our feedback. But I would just ask that the Commissioners reconsider that fee structure, um, a- again, as, as no other agency in the state has that, that program in place. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioner. I'm Ally Carley with Lamar Advertising. As, um, my coworker Kelly Strobel recently spoke, we at Lamar appreciate your time, and we appreciate the city staff as well, working so closely with us on this. Um, we do oppose the annual billboard business permit, um, because as Bob just mentioned from YESCO, no other community in the state has this permit fee, no other community within any of the surrounding states has this permit fee. So we'd like you to explore a different option, if possible. Um, we understand we have to work together, and we're a team, uh, so we certainly wanna partner with you and work with you on this. If we were to propose something else, as Kelly mentioned, potentially just larger permits on the front end, or maybe we propose, like the MDOT does, it's a every-three-year option where permit fees are at that point versus every year. Again, we would prefer to see you consider a removal of that BDP, the business, or the billboard business permit altogether, but if we had to work together, we're open to something like that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments for this topic? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I do have one hand raised online.
Yes, please let him through.
Earl Charles.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for the time. Excuse me. Earl Charles with Brandon Sign Solutions. I wanna start by thanking, um, Michael Alvarez and his team and, uh, working with the, uh, sign community and a lot of our end-users. Um, and I will say upfront that I missed the last two meetings and presentations, which is why I'm coming in here kind of at the midnight hour, but there's a couple of things that are really disturbing to me, uh, as somebody who, uh, has been in the sign industry for over forty years and has been specifically in the sign industry in the Helena area for over twenty years. Um, and, and one is that three hundred feet, and, and the thing that bothers me the most about it is it's three hundred feet from residential zone, has nothing to do with visibility. That will take two-thirds of what's going on on Prospect Avenue, make them shut down. That'll take, uh, people out on Euclid, making them shut down, even though their signs can even be seen from the residential district, but because their building or the back of their property touches the zone, um, the residential zone, they're now gonna have to fall into this, and they lose, uh, twenty-nine percent of their, basically, advertising ability on that display. The, the second thing, and so I would, I would say that if we went back to the original one hundred feet visible, uh, it's worked for many, many years, and we really haven't had a lot of issues with that. So the next thing I'd like to talk about is the, um, two-second and no animations. I, I can promise you this, every single one of you, a couple of years from now, will be regretting doing that, because you will force people to cram a whole bunch of stuff on their sign, 'cause they can only leave it in a static way, and it will not look good. I, I, I've been, I've, electronic message centers are my forte. I do them all over the state. I've been doing them for over twenty years, and I can promise you, you will absolutely regret passing this on the ordinance. I, I promise you, you will. And then the last thing I wanted to say is regarding the variance, uh, for the Board of Adjustments, uh, I would just say this, if there's any one thing I would strongly recommend, as far as I know, you're the only city in the state, and as far as I know, the only city that I'm aware of, where if, uh, we lose in the Board of Adjustments, the only recourse is District Court. Uh, I think it should come back to the city, um, and maybe the Commissioners can then take a look at it if we've got to appeal the Board of Adjustment's decision. And with that, thank you for your time. I'm here for any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no other public comment online.
I'd like to team a motion.
Mr. Mayor, final comment, if I may.
Go ahead.
Um, I won't be supporting this motion, uh, or this ordinance change, while I do appreciate Mr. Alvarez's and staff's work on it. I, I think there are some concerns that have been expressed here tonight that, uh, caused me concern, and, uh, and so I won't be supporting this, so, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, um, Mr. Alvarez, would you mind coming up? So I'm, I guess, first I'll preface my comment with a, or my comment with a question. Can you maybe talk a little about, about the, so it sounds like there's, there's, um, one thing in particular that people are concerned about, and that is this annual, um, um, business fee, just like every other business in the city pays every year. Um, can you talk about, uh, kind of the origin of that, and what's in the discussion of the zoning commission included, um, when they were discussing this?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. I would say there's, um, uh, three main, uh, sort of parents to the, the building business, um, permit section. Um, one is, uh, annual permitting of billboards, um, from, um, uh, indirect or Brink's Home State. Uh, this is, um, this is something that happens elsewhere in the country, um, although I grant it not in the immediate vicinity of, of Helena. Two, uh, a lot of languages largely cribbed from, um, the code in Billings, um, and then married to our own, um, business permit, um, word.
Yeah.
Section. So, uh, those are the, the three main impetus is for, um, the creation of, uh, this specific language for the cap and replace program.
And then, um, just, can you talk a little bit about the discussion at the zoning commission? And I think, as we heard in some of the Commission comments at the beginning, when this whole process first started, um, there was a lot of community discussion, and then, um, from our last meeting, what we had understood was that there was a, um, collaborative process to get to the document we have here. I don't think anyone, um, is probably happy one hundred percent, but there was, from what I understand, there was a collaborative effort to find some middle ground.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. I would say there's, there was a really successful collaborative effort. Um, uh, I, I would say the three hundred foot to one hundred foot, um, and visible, which is the main, or which is really the last complaint of the, uh, or the, the last big complaint of the, the on-premise, um, sign company, um, or on-premise sign companies, that and, um, uh, the animations. Uh, I would say there was a lot of back and forth with the zoning commission about, um, having the electronic message centers go off at night. Um, it, this, the reason, uh, that subsection is part of the conditions for change, um, in, uh, recommended, um, conditions that is in the back of this, uh, for your vote tonight, uh, is because that had originally been three hundred feet to, um, a residence. It was something that was workshopped quite a bit. Um, I would certainly support the existing standard of one hundred feet and visible as suggested by, um, uh, Earl with Branded Solutions, if, um, that was the language the Commission, Mayor and Commission wanted to, um, make tonight.
Okay.
So, would you, would you take this back then to, um, um? Redo?
Um, the, uh, thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, uh, to redo the specific on-premise?
With the language and everything.
The, the on-premise language, or, uh, to update a new draft without the conditional language to be read in at the end, or, um?
'Cause I'm, I'm, I, I, what I hear you say is that you're comfortable with, um, what, his name, Earl? Earl's, uh, proposal. If you're comfortable with it, is it possible to redo or update whichever way we wanna go?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Uh, you could, um, just tonight, um, adopt it with that, that language, uh, the existing language.
Mr. Mayor, could I add one thing to that?
Yes, please.
'Cause it, um, i- if we add additional language regarding that piece, I would be interested in, perhaps, City Attorney Doctor could help us, um, with some language around the business permit piece as well. Um, I'm, I feel like there might be room to modify that, and I think the, um, some of the public comments suggested that it could be, there's a couple of options out there. So is there a way not to derail the entire process to continue to move forward? 'Cause it seems like, again, and I commend everybody for the amount of work that went into getting this far on so many pieces. Um, I don't wanna stop the process, but if we were able to amend the language on the one hundred foot versus three hundred feet and find some way to accommodate a discussion on the business fees, um, i- is there any way to do that, City Attorney?
Mayor, Commissioners, I think, uh, if you limit it to the change to what's already in city code, um, which I heard Mayor suggest about the three hundred back to the one hundred and the visible sign sightline, I think that's easy to do right here, but adding in the business permit, whole section changes and options that to, to discuss, I would suggest it might be useful to table that and discuss it and come back at another time, having given some direction on what you might want to see in some language that we could then bring back and propose for that section.
So to be clear, we could move forward with the whole ordinance tabling that one piece of it that could later be reintegrated, or we have to table the whole thing?
You'd have to table the whole thing, um, to a date certain so that you could hear it at that time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, uh, I just wanted to say something, um, because I hear there are options out there. So, um, in coming back, would some of those options be brought forth where we can look at and see which one will be most appropriate?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. In my opinion, um, some of the options that have been asked for from the billboard community for the off-premise sign community aren't, um, particularly tenable for city staff. For instance, doing a three-year permit cycle, it works for the state because they have, um, a wide variety of, of billboards that will be renewed each one of, each, during each of those cycles, but for our own, um, our own budgeting purposes, taking in, it's, it wouldn't be like two thousand dollars, it's, you know, more, probably more in the ballpark of about eleven hundred dollars, something, I'm sorry, uh, like eleven thousand dollars. Doing that as, every three years is, is awkward for, is gonna be awkward for our budget. Um, we would, uh, I guess, I'm sorry, and if it, the fee was then a hundred per year for every three years, probably, it, it's gonna be quite a bit more. There's, uh, probably a, around a hundred billboards in town, so there'd be a hundred dollar fee on each of them.
What I'm saying is, uh, just those options come to us, I mean, if there are options, can we look at those options? And then we, when, if we were to table this, can those options be brought forth for us to look at?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. It, uh, absolutely at your, at your direction.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, back to, uh, the City Attorney's, um, comments, so if, on, on the condition piece that includes the three hundred feet of any residential zoning district must be automatically turned off, automatically turned off between hours eleven PM and six AM daily. If it, that's a piece that it, it sounds like talk of moving it back to a hundred, does, would that include then the, um, cutoff of eleven PM to six AM?
Mayor, Commissioner, Dean, I would defer that to Planner Alvarez's first question. My understanding was not, but I'll, I'll, he knows better than I.
Yeah, so there, there's a give and take with, um, sorry, thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Uh, there's a give and take here with, uh, this piece of legislation. Currently, within a hundred feet of a residential zone and visible, uh, you're not permitted to put up an electronic message center at all. The new legislation would allow you to put up an electronic message center, um, but if it's within three hundred feet of a residential zone, it would need to turn off between eleven and six if your business is also closed.
Okay. Thank you.
But what if it's within one hundred feet?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Uh, you would, currently, under the current code, you're not allowed to put up an electronic message center at all. Um, you would be allowed to put one up under the, the new code, however, you'd have to turn it off at night when your business is closed.
So if a business was still open, like, two o'clock in the morning, it would stay open? It would stay on?
Uh, that is correct.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, I guess what I would say is, I think that, I mean, personally, I think that the zoning commission staff and the industry stakeholders seem to have found a pretty, um, good compromise in the resolution with the conditions as it's currently drafted. I understand it isn't one hundred percent what industry stakeholders... I understand it isn't 100% what industry stakeholders want. But we also have an entire zoning commission that heard other public comment. One of the things I hear about all the time is how so much of our light pollution, we've made a lot of progress in terms of lighting in our community and becoming more compliant with our dark skies ordinance as lights are updated. But the sign light pollution is really what a lot of it comes from. And I think, as Planner Alvarez explained in his presentation, it's one of those things that's harder to regulate, which is unfortunate, because, you know, it'd be great if we could be able to see the northern lights here more often. But because we have the light pollution we do, we cannot. And so I think, in my opinion, I feel that the zoning commission staff and community stakeholders have worked over, you know, eight months here to find more than eight months, probably 18 months, 18 months to find a common ground. Is everyone happy? Clearly not. Did everyone get 100% of what they wanted? Clearly not. But I think that's a sign of of a compromise that moves us in a right in the right direction. I do think there, as always, there's opportunity if we get additional feedback from the community that there needs to be adjustments. We can amend the ordinance. But I would hate to see 18 months of work within the community go to waste, especially since, you know, I as a commission, there really has not been a lot of feedback from commissioners that there was unhappiness with the direction in which this ordinance was moving in finding that common ground. So I'd be in favor of moving ahead today with the recommended motion as it stands and as the zoning commission approved. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, we have a mixed vote. So we will we'll go to vote and see where we're at with it.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve an ordinance revising the regulation of signs by amending Chapter 23 Title 11 of the Helena City Code by repealing and replacing Chapter 23 General Sign Regulations in its entirety and adopting this new Chapter 23 Sign Regulations in lieu thereof, with the condition that the area of allowable wall signage in Section 11-23-9 be changed from 8% to 15%. The further condition that Sections 11-23-6H be amended to read any quote, "Any on premise electronic message centers that is located within 300 feet of any residential zoning district must automatically turn off between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM daily," end quote. And further condition that Section 11-23-7E be amended to read, quote, "A nonconforming on premise sign shall cease to be used when the business activity," end quote.
Do we have a second? The motion fails. There's not a second. The motion fails, right? So the motion fails.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a different motion?
Please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to I don't have the recommended language in front of me. Sorry. I move to table an ordinance revising the regulation of signs by amending Chapter 3 Title 11 of the Helena City Code by repealing and replacing Chapter 23 General Sign Regulations in its entirety and adopting this new Chapter 23 Sign Regulations in lieu thereof to the soonest possible commission meeting agenda to consider specific options related to the business permitting business permit and Section 11236 related to on premise electronic message centers.
Mayor.
In Aranaba, where did she get it?
Yes.
Okay.
I the only thing I would suggest is that we do a date certain because it is a public hearing requested, and we then know when to come back with public notice.
At the commission meeting on?
So so August 26th is the next, except that one is when the budget's going to be heard. So
The next one.
The earliest one is September. What you got there?
Mayor, Commission, the next available commission agenda would be September 9th.
September 9th.
Manager Burton, September 9? Oh, he won't be here. Okay, I see why you agreed to September You okay with September 9? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion to table to September 9 carries five to zero.
Thank you.
At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Any final comments from the commission?
Just one, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Planner Alvarez, thank you for all your work over the last 18 months. We do appreciate it, and we look forward to working with you on the getting this over the finish line. Thank you.
Any others? If nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.